Welcome to Perspectives Online, also on air from WFSU Public Media. I'm Tom Flanagan. This is program number seven in our series of political perspectives in the run-up to the August 18th primary election in Leon County. And this program was recorded on Thursday, July 30th for playback both on WFSU FM and also on our WFSU Public Media Facebook site on Tuesday, August the 4th. And today, we're going to be talking with the two contenders for the Leon County School Board seat, which represents District 4. If you're not familiar with the map here, I'll spell it out for you. The district is essentially the northwest quadrant of Leon County, and it's bounded roughly by Highway 90 west from Capital Circle out to the Oak Lockney River, and then from I-10 north to the Georgia Line, and as far east then as Thomasville Road. It takes in that entire area. Lots of lakes.
Well said. Yes.
A whole bunch. Yeah, so if you're into kayaking and fishing and stuff, it's just heaven personified here. There is an incumbent who's running for reelection. There's also a challenger in the race, and we'll meet those folks in a moment. What we'll do is each candidate will have a few moments to talk about their background, what they bring to the office as far as unique qualifications, and then we're going to jump into some general education issues, followed by some matters of specific import to Leon County schools. And we ask our guests to keep the comments pithy, even though we don't impose a specific time limit on that. So let's meet the candidates for Leon County School Board, District 4. We did a drawing here to get an order of response, and on the basis of that, we'll hear first from the incumbent in the race, DeeDee Rasmussen. Miss Rasmussen, it is all yours. Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Great to be with you, Tom. Thank you for doing this, as always. And to our friends at Public Radio and WFSU, we're grateful for your service to our community. A little bit about my background. I have been, well, I am a mom of three children who all attended and graduated from our Leon County schools. And so they, I've been through elementary school and middle school and high school. And so I think I have a pretty robust experience as a parent and also as a school board member. And I've been in Tallahassee since 1990, but I also was here before that as a student at Florida State. I have a master's degree in public administration from FSU. And I'm a good Seminole fan, like most of us, and just love this community so much. Grateful for the honor and the privilege of serving on the board for these years. And just feeling like, you know, now is really a critical time. We're in a crisis, and that's when experienced leadership matters most. And so I'm going at it again, and, you know, grateful to be here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, DeeDee. We meet now the challenger in the race for District 4 School Board, Alex Stemley. Alex, go right ahead, sir.
Thanks for having us here today. Thanks, DeeDee, for being here. My name is Alex Stemley, and I am the challenger here in the Leon County District 4 race. I am a lifelong resident of Leon County schools. I attended District 4 schools, Seeley, Raw, and Leon. When I graduated high school, I started a job at the District 4 school, working in their after-school program out on the playground. I worked my way up as the director there and became, got my master's of business administration at Florida State. And when I finished up with that, I went to go work for a company, a local company here, that had just been given a $10 million grant from Capitol Health Plan to put resources into our schools. And so I was responsible for developing and implementing that program and not just, you know, the eight schools that they were currently in, but all the way to 54 schools. And that's a program where we went into each school and we found the fit that would really, you know, worked for their school culture. I was able to work with a lot of principals and build relationships with district administrators and district staff. And then, you know, I got myself after two years, and we completed that implementation into the four counties, surrounding counties, went back into the school district, worked my way up. I'm currently the dean of students at Deer Lake Middle School. We call it the dean of everything. I'm also the athletic director and activities director, and I teach a Leon County virtual school class. And so, you know, I feel that I have a very unique perspective. I've been able to build successful programs in our schools at the district level and all of our schools. And I also have got a chance to see what it really looks like from the school level. And so I also, I have two boys. My wife is a career educator as well. I have two boys, seven and four. So I'm personally invested in this for the long run, and I'm looking forward to being a part of the school board so that I can really impact their future and the future of all of the kids here in District 4.
Alex, if we could stay with you for just a moment on that. You talked about what you would bring to the job because of your past experience as a teacher and the other things that you do as an instructional frontliner, if you will. But let's move that into the district level. What specifically do you bring, do you think, to that job potentially that is not in that position now?
Well, I feel that I bring a voice to District 4, and I feel that we've lost our voice at the school board level. And I think this district's looking for somebody that's going to be active and involved and visible on our campuses. And so as I work at the school level and work in the district level, I understand that it's very important that the two work together, the district and the board and the schools, all have to work together to be able to find solutions that work for our schools. And so I think my advantage is that I have my ear to the ground, and I have relationships built with people throughout this district and really understand what impacts student learning at the school level and what really our priorities and our policies and our budget initiatives really need to be addressed to. And I feel that I can bring that to the board, and it's a different aspect than my opponent.
Okay. DeeDee, back to you. Defend what you have done specifically within District 4 on the school board that you think needs to be continued as far as the voters are concerned.
Thanks, Tom. And I appreciate the perspective of an educator, but in fact, we have a board that already has a Deer Lake teacher on it and a seasoned principal on it. Superintendent himself was a principal. Most of our assistant principals were, excuse me, assistant superintendents also were educators. So we have the very vital voice of education professionals at the district already, but the school board is a citizen board. And what I believe I bring and have brought for these years is my perspective as a leader informed by governance and structures and systems. As you may recall, from a long time ago, my career actually worked for the governor and cabinet when they served as the State Board of Education. So we set policy and to hear the voice of educators and teachers and parents, absolutely. And I do hear that. I also visit campuses pretty often. I know a lot of teachers. I see, I go to, you know, the competitions that they have and the STEM, like, science fairs and those kinds of things. But the fact is that the role of the board is not to be fully present in the schools all the time. That is the role of school administrators and teachers. And the statutes are pretty clear on exactly the delineation of responsibilities between the superintendent and board members. In fact, it was only a couple of years ago that the legislature actually had to change the law to allow a school board member to actually just show up on a campus. And so I thankfully have never had that kind of problem. I've always had great access to our principals. I try to talk to them frequently and find out what's happening. But the day-to-day operations of the school district are delineated and specifically statutorily authorized to the superintendent, whether he or she is elected or appointed. There's case law even that specifies exactly what to do. So I believe that I offer, I actually have a master's degree in public administration, which is what governance is. And I would point to the other night to be a prime example of that. And we'll probably get into this more in a minute. But, you know, we had a really divisive issue on the agenda. I had one board member who wanted to reopen schools yesterday and one that wanted to not reopen schools until we had a vaccine, and a group of people out there that are part of a national movement called Refuse to Return. And I believe I was able, because of my experience, to help navigate and lead us. We had to really thread a needle pretty tightly. And I took those very diverse opinions, and we were able to craft a compromise where we landed on a plan with a unanimous vote. And that is why I believe that seasoned and experienced leadership is critical, especially in time of a crisis.
Moving forward, however, go ahead, Alex. Go.
I respect that. And I will say that, you know, I feel that lately, we have not seen Miss Rasmussen in our schools. And I do believe that that's apparent in some of the things that have come across. We had a failed bus implementation at the beginning of the school year, which was a very clear, the superintendent said several times, that we did not listen to the people at the front lines. And so as we bring that plane in for landing, which Miss Rasmussen talked about the other night, we have one wheel falling off, the brakes aren't really sure if they're going to work, and we still haven't talked to teachers, and we still haven't really given them the ideas and what it's going to look like when they return to be safe. And so I respect that. You know, Miss Rasmussen says that she's involved, and I just, I'm not sure if that's really accurate or represented in a clear winner.
Okay. As long as we're on that train of thought here, DeeDee, an opportunity quickly to respond, if you wouldn't, and we'll move on to some other things.
Well, as you see in the campaign, I have the strong endorsements of multiple principals and teachers. So I think they went back to differ. And I regret that Mr. Stemley hasn't seen me in a school or doesn't recall having seen me in a school. That's his perspective and probably not one worth taking a lot of time on today.
Okay. Alex, let's throw it back to you here. Whereas before, we may have had some really scintillating discussion about should there be a seventh period, what will the bus schedules look like, all of these kinds of things. Those bets are off. We are now in totally uncharted territory. We are in a new position of having to essentially redo the entire spectrum of public education, not just in Leon County, but across the state of Florida. Nationally, we have to deal with these issues too. So what do you do when you have a circumstance where you may not know if we will ever get, at least within our lifetime perhaps, 100% of the student bodies that we have back into the classrooms again in some sort of normal fashion? As a board member, if you're elected, how do you move forward under those circumstances?
Well, you know, looking back at this, and I really appreciate the district and the school board members and the superintendent working really hard on this plan. And they have, they really have. They've tried to do the best that they can and provide as many, you know, resources to our parents to know. But sitting back at the bird's eye level, it's nobody's fault that we've had some of those missteps that we've had. We have an organizational design that is set up from decades ago. It's a very siloed approach. It's a very top-heavy district. And so when we start to look at how our organization's design and how we learn and how we structure the power structures within our organization, we've got to make sure that it works for everybody. And it's nobody's fault. It happens over time from organizational creep, where the power structures begin to be unbalanced. And so we've got to work together to build those structures back to where the schools and the district office are working together to come up with these solutions. Unfortunately, you know, we did get the plane landed here closely, but I'm still not confident that these schools are going to open. And so I don't know what our backup plan is. I know that Miss Rasmussen talked about the computers. One of her big initiatives was the computers and the Chromebooks that was sent out to thousands of voters. And we know that she was, you know, was the primary person that negotiated that contract. And unfortunately, those aren't going to be here. And I think everybody in the district knew that that was probably a long stretch for those to be here on the first day. What Miss Rasmussen is not telling you is that they're probably not going to be here the second nine weeks. They might not even be here the second semester. And so we were able to find 11,000 devices within our system. And so if you look at that decision right there, that's $4 million that we could have put back into our schools roughly to be able to really address some of the concerns that our teachers have and our staff have at returning. And so, you know, Miss Rasmussen, they've done some things to try and give us some more resource at the school. But I would hope that she would support maybe the district office and a lot of the district staff who are not 100% needed to be at the district office. Maybe they'll come out the first few weeks and really help us understand what we need to do, and they can help us ride buses and wipe down surfaces and check temperatures and sit with sick kids and sub for classes. And so I hope that I'll see that initiative supported, and we can get maybe 60, 75% of those people at the district the first several weeks helping us. I think that would go a long way into making sure our administrators and our teachers feel safe about going back.
Okay, Miss Rasmussen, for the response, please.
I don't know how to respond to the fact that I didn't see a pandemic coming, and I couldn't affect the supply chain to make sure that the Chromebooks got here. I think we're all doing the very best we can under the circumstances. Clearly, these are uncharted waters, unprecedented time. We've done everything we can. We've convened over 20 focus groups, a citizen task force. We've solicited the expertise of the medical profession and public health officers. I've added a call for a public or a chief medical officer to, because I do agree that our teachers and the folks that are going to have to go back to the front lines, they deserve to know that everything humanly possible has been done to ensure that the space that they're entering is as safe and clean as possible. And so that is why I added that into the mix. I felt like we haven't done the district, you know, again, not my specific job, but the district probably has not done the best job of communicating. But I know from experience in crisis management, sometimes it's a choice of doing the job or communicating about it, and we need to do both. So I am regretful that the teachers, some of them, didn't feel as included in the communication process, and we absolutely have to fix that. I was on a call, I had a Zoom call with all of my elementary school principals in District 4 the other day, just to make sure that their voice was heard and part of the conversation. That's what prompted part of the delay to give them some more time to get their master schedules put together. I, you know, we are all, I think it's regrettable that folks feel like they can, you know, it kind of goes back to the arena quote, when you're, you know, when you're in the arena and you're taking the slugs, you're doing the best you can. And I think all of us are really trying really hard to get it right. And while I'm grateful for constructive suggestions and criticisms, I don't think being an arbitrary quarterback is helpful right now.
Okay. If you're just joining us on our political perspectives from WFSU Public Media, you are in tune with the two contenders for Leon School Board District 4, the incumbent, DeeDee Rasmussen, and Alex Stemley, who is the challenger in that. Some dates to keep in mind for the upcoming primary election. Early voting as we speak here is now underway in Leon County, continuing through August 16th, and early voting locations are posted on the Supervisor of Elections website. There have been some changes, especially out in some of the areas where you have a large number of senior citizens who are residing there. They've made some changes for that. Primary Election Day, of course, is August 18th. A question for both of you. Alex, let me start with you here. Do you think the Florida Board of Education maybe overstepped its boundaries when Mr. Corcoran, the commissioner, came out and said, hey, all you guys, back to the classroom just as quick as you can make it?
Yeah, I think that definitely needs to be a local choice here at the local level. You know, that's, you know, we have a pandemic, obviously, like Miss Rasmussen said, and there's different effects throughout the different states and different localities. And so I'm all about, you know, local control. And I, you know, I do, I do hope and still, you know, still do wish that the education commissioner will give that control over to the locals and be able to let them really make the decision which fits best for their kids and their community.
And Miss Rasmussen, you talked about your background having to do with a lot of interconnection with state government. So when it comes to the Board of Education or the Florida Department of Health in Leon County, how do you get everyone kind of singing out of the same page of the hymnal? There seems to be a lot of policy disconnect right now.
There does appear to be some policy disconnect. And I, you know, again, I don't want to be, just like I don't want people to criticize us when we're in the arena. I'm not trying to criticize them when they're in their arena. It's different. It's a different perspective. You know, clearly, there are, I would prefer to have home rule. I've always had that position, that the local government closest to the people is where it ought to be. That said, though, as a board chair, I have a responsibility to make sure that I at least, you know, make every effort to remind my colleagues and our constituents that I have an obligation. We all took an oath of office that we would uphold the laws of the state of Florida. So that's a big part of the conversation right now. I don't, I can't sit back, I can't preside over a school district and watch it go bankrupt. If we aren't, if we don't comply with the rules of the Department of Education, then we would be bankrupt. And we would, teachers and principals and deans would have no job to go back to. And so I just, I can't, you know, we have to, we have to work within the rules that were given. And, you know, sometimes, you know, you don't get all the right cards, but you've got to learn how to play a rough hand, and that's where we are.
Well, you mentioned revenues, and not only are we dependent on revenues that come from the state, particularly for such things as construction dollars and that, but you also have to depend on a fairly healthy local real estate market so that property tax revenues remain intact. We saw something just recently that showed that Tallahassee is really in relatively good shape if you look nationally as far as the job losses that we have seen and also the drop in potential property tax revenue. Don't have hard numbers on that. I'm sure that's going to be forthcoming quickly. But still, there's a good chance you're not going to have the bucks to play with that the district has had in the past. What adjustments do you make if you stay on the board and go forward?
Well, I think we're in relatively good, I say this very hesitantly, because I lived through the Great Recession of 2008 on this board and made some tough choices. We closed a school. We closed a very popular program for gifted children. We, it was rough. And so I'm hesitant. I don't want to, you know, get out there too far. But we, I think we are in great shape in terms of our own reserves right now. Just as state agencies are being asked by OPB to hold back 5% or 6%, we've already begun to make those preparations with our, I've been working with our CFO to make sure that we are in as good a shape as we can be under the circumstances. But I'll tell you, when I worked in the Appropriations Committee during the recession of the 90s, we had 21 special sessions where we cut the budget 21 times. So, and Disney World never closed back then. So I'm concerned. I mean, the Revenue Estimating Conference hasn't met with the new numbers yet. They, we don't even have, you know, I just saw something today, a headline about Universal Studios during the peak of the pandemic, having lost, you know, upwards of 94% I think of their revenue. It was, you know, the numbers are going to be staggering because we rely so heavily on our, you know, on the tourism and hospitality revenue through the general fund, but also, as you mentioned, our local tax dollars, our sales tax dollars. We, the half penny that we count on, you know, for our schools are, when people were staying home and only buying groceries delivered to their porch from Publix and not going out shopping, our local state sales tax revenues will definitely be impacted. The last time we went through the Great Recession, our property values, we were kind of in a bubble in Tallahassee. We really did withstand that largely because of state government, FSU family being the major employers, and of course, Leon County schools. So, you know, I want to be cautiously optimistic and hopeful, but I think it might really be in for a rough time.
Okay. And Alex Stemley, how do you move forward? Why do you even want to move forward into a board position? It's so much more fun when you say, hey, I'm going to do this, and I'm going to do that, and you teachers can count on me for this and that. And suddenly, you're going, guys, we're not going to have the money to do anywhere near what I'd like to do.
Thank you, Tom, for saying that.
But Alex, how do you approach that if you're going to jump into a board that is going to be in the midst of a lot of cost containment and revenue shedding and that kind of thing? It doesn't sound like a very fun job.
Well, I will tell you, I do feel like I am, I do have the best job in the district right now at Deer Lake Middle School. And I, and I'll fight anybody tooth and nail about that one. And so there's a lot of people that ask me that, Tom, but this campaign was launched before COVID. And so there were several things that, you know, when you run for office, it's because you have some issues with the current person in it or the way that the system is moving. And so I hear Miss Rasmussen, we are going to have some budget cuts, but when we make decisions one week to say that we're going to cut the school budgets by 20%, but the next week, we pass out $400,000 to the people making the most at the top, that is, that's concerning to me. And so decisions that we are making, you know, and Miss Rasmussen speaks of being an armchair quarterback, and I've been very proud of this campaign. We did not touch in any criticism in terms of the COVID response and retreat back in March. We did not get into the graduation debate. We did not even engage into the school reopening plans until the $11 million was put out there on a campaign slogan and put out there and said that, hey, this is going to be the way that we're going to solve all of our problems. And we know that putting kids in front of computers and not teachers is not going to solve our problems. And so we got to look at the resource allocation and how we use our resources. We had a failed bus implementation that I mentioned before that we were hoping to get 30, you know, 30% efficiencies that, you know, we could have put back into our system. And instead, we came out with a non-disclosure agreement and $350,000 on the table, and we didn't get those efficiencies. We've purchased all sorts of vans at schools. We have turf fields, which I really do like. I enjoy having turf fields. But we've got to make sure that we're making decisions that really impact student learning and in the classrooms. And so moving forward, we got to look at our resource allocation. We got to figure out how we can create synergistic relationships between our assets, whether that be physical assets, personnel assets, so that we can really understand what it is that impacts student learning, and we don't lose that as we move forward. You know, that's what we've got to do, Tom. And I think when, when we talk about my candidacy and bringing that to the board, those are, those are things that I think I can bring to the table and work with the other board members and support the superintendent in making sure that we create a structure and we look at our resources so that we are using them in the most efficient manner. And we're not messaging to the community that we're going to have 20% budget cuts and then passing out raises to the people at the top right after that.
DeeDee, you look like you want to jump in there.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Okay. Well, let's talk about the raises. Mr. Stemley, did you take one of those raises? Because they weren't raises. They were, they were a small token of a bonus because we couldn't afford raises that were recurring dollars. And at that time, I remember looking at it and thinking, hmm, well, and what I really thought was, well, we've got the money right now. We better give it to them while we can. And lo and behold, if we didn't end up asking those people to practically work 24/7 for the next three, six months, these are the people who are in the trenches now trying to figure this thing out. And these are the people who I saw at a time when, you know, the teachers are going to get a significant raise thanks to the legislature and the governor pushing that. But these folks are the ones who were parking cars during the drive-in graduation, just as an example. And they're the ones who've been in the trenches nonstop. This is, you know, this has not been a summer for those folks. And I'm glad, I'm glad that we were able to give them a small raise. I, you know, at the time, I kind of paused for a minute, but I would have been the only no vote. It wouldn't have mattered. So I think that was, that was fine. Let's talk about the devices. One-to-one computer devices has been a goal of ours for a number of years. And the Florida Department of Education has been setting deadlines, and they keep kind of getting moved back. But the one, the goal of a one-to-one, for every student to have their own device, has been around for a number of years. I believe that COVID was an accelerant that made it happen now. We would have been so much better off in the last quarter of the last school year when we had to quickly pivot to an all-online scenario that no one envisioned because nobody saw this pandemic coming. Had we had those devices then, that nine weeks, we would not have lost the kind of learning gains that I'm afraid we may have lost because we didn't have those devices and we weren't prepared. So I'm still proud. Can I control the supply chain? No. But do, how, think about your home computer. How old is it before it's really kind of outdated? So most of the, most of, some of our schools have been fortunate in that they've had PTOs that have been able to come up with raised money and come up with enough money to buy some computers. I think Fairview had already had one-to-one. Maybe they had a grant that funded that. But overall, the district can't support all different kinds of devices all across, all across the county. So if one school has one kind and another school has another, we can't, that's impossible for the IT department to support. So it was important for us to land on a singular type of device and a singular learning platform. That's another thing that we learned during the last quarter of the last year, is people were really frustrated that they didn't have the ability, or they, excuse me, that they were required to go to all different sites. One might be going to Zoom, and one might be going to Meet, and one might be going to a different this and different that. If you had seven different teachers, you imagine, if you've got three high schoolers, they each have seven teachers using seven different things. That's 21, you know, that the mom is supposed to try to supervise or the dad. And so that's the issue on the device, is that it's long overdue and it should have been done before now. And then finally, with regard to turf fields, one of the things that Mr. Stemley may not realize is that we have different pots of money that are used for different things. And the turf, we actually are going to save money from mowing and maintenance. The turf allows us to play multiple sports all year long when regular grass would not because of maintenance. So we're saving money. Not only that, we're now, especially once COVID is gone, we were headed on a great track toward being able to attract, bring in big tournaments. That's tourism money for the county. Fill up hotels. People come in, they buy things, and we make a little money to pay for it. So those are my answers to the things you just raised.
Okay. And Alex, as a coach, moving ahead, at some point, we may actually see a return to not just regular physical education classes, but actually competitive sports in the school level. Now, what do you do in the interim, though, regardless of what kind of turf you got down on the field?
Well, let me, let me just address first. I totally support the district staff getting paid and compensated for their, for their work and 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 Ms. Rasmussen used the term raises and bonuses back and forth within her response. And so I I understand that they were a bonus. And and so I, you know, I don't want anybody to think that I don't support the staff. Those are the people that were working hard this summer. There's no doubt about that. I support one-to-one. And like Ms. Rasmussen said, if we had the leadership at the board level over the past years to get those one-to-one devices in the schools earlier, you're right, we wouldn't be in this situation. And so I I really think that, you know, when we talk about going in with 35,000 Chromebooks, we got to do this in a phased implementation that makes sense. And so we now have pulled back 11,000 computers and devices from our school level that have been repurposed that will be pushed out so that we can pull off this digital academy when we come back. And I, you know, and I I just don't want that to be lost, that I don't support that. In terms of your your question and your response, we got to come up with solutions, not just for the kids that are at our schools, but the kids that maybe are staying home on the digital academy so that they can have interactions, meaningful interactions with other, you know, stakeholders, their friends, their teachers, their coaches. And we have to organize those. And we have to work with community partnerships to develop those. We can't do it all. We can't park all the cars and we can't feed all the kids by ourselves. And so I want to see us get into some community partnerships to help us with this big load and this big, this big, you know, dilemma that we're in. And I would like to see some of our administrators, some of our staff get back to what is really the priority, which is student learning and classroom learning. And so that's my response, Tom. But I think we can, I think we can do it all. We just need to have some optimism and we just have to be able to get in there and and find somebody that can can really ask the right questions early on in the process and not not ask teachers and meet with teachers the day before we we throw out the reopening plan and actually sit down with the the teachers and the teachers' union and come up with plans and solutions and give them some reassurances. The problem we have right now, Tom, is we have listservs flying out from schools where they're saying kids don't have to wear masks inside. We walk into class, walk into schools and principals aren't wearing their mask. And so we have some teachers who are walking into schools right now who are very fearful about the policies and the procedures that are going to be enforced. And our bathroom is going to be cleaned. And I noticed that Dr. Gail did a great job of wiping down the podium the other night at the at the school board meeting. But but we know when a kid walks into a teacher's bathroom in their classroom, nobody's going to clean that bathroom before the next kid walks in. And so we got to come up with some solutions and and really show our our teachers that that they that we're doing everything we can. Some of those dollars, we could have looked at our ventilation systems. We have an open-air duct ventilation system, which we could have put some resources in early in the summer. Ms. Rasmussen asked at the workshop the other day, she asked the the question of what it's going to cost for us to do that. And nobody knew that answer. And so for some reason, we didn't ask those questions early on in the process. And so I really do feel that's the difference between me and the status quo is that I will ask those questions. I'll know what questions to ask, when and where, and and really understand what's going at the school level so that we can help the superintendent and support the district administrators so that we get them in a situation where where we are working together and as successful as possible.
Okay, DeeDee, an opportunity to respond to that.
Well, you know, if 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 Mr. Stemley can see a pandemic coming and can could have known ahead of time that there would be a supply chain problem. I'm, you know, I'm one of five board members and I do think leadership is important. But sometimes, you know, one vote doesn't carry the day. So you just have to learn how to work within the system and do the best you can. That's what I've done.
Okay. DeeDee, while we're in your neck of the woods here, a problem during the latter part of the last semester, the spring semester, was that a significant number of students did not even log on. They kind of just disappeared. And as far as your concept for the district to what you you, we go back to truant officers? On virtual truant officers, there we go. Did you want to try to find what kids are not hooked in and how you compel them to actually become part of the process if they essentially vanish?
Well, yeah, that was a problem. And and I think that's why the superintendent came out with his plan for some kind of real-time synchronous learning. And then it morphed into a little bit of this and a little bit of that. And that probably still remains to be seen how that ends up working with the autonomy that's now been given to each school. You know, the idea, I believe, from his proposal is that, by the way, this is his proposal, that the idea is that if you choose the digital academy, you are, for the most part, checking in and you're there, not in front of a computer screen all day, but you're logging in throughout the day and in in some kind of synchronous communication with your teacher. That was one of the big criticisms that we heard from parents whose kids were trying to log in is that the teachers were, there was not great communication back and forth. And that's one of the reasons, as I understand it, that the superintendent has insisted that teachers, even if they're going to teach in the digital academy space, they're going to do it from their classroom. So, you know, if a student doesn't log in, it's like they're absent. And I guess they don't pass the class, but I don't know if we send a truant officer to to see what's going on. The other option is Florida, the Arlene County Schools Virtual School or Florida Virtual School. And either of those are all about completion rates. So that, you know, you don't get the credit if you don't complete the course. So, you know, we're in a new time and a new space. And I certainly hope it doesn't mean virtual truancy officers. I hope I hope we'll see, I think with the improvements that we're going to make and the dedication of our teachers who who, I mean, the teachers that I know are calling their kids on the phone. If they're not on there, they are calling and trying their best to find them. And, you know, if I have to get in the car and drive and see if we can find them, maybe that's what it comes to. But, you know, these are new days and new times. And this is a new obstacle that we're going to have to try and figure out.
From the viewpoint of a teacher, Alex Stemley, what do you think? How do you get the kids engaged and involved into log in for crying out loud?
I I don't agree with Ms. Rasmussen that that families were trying to log on and teachers weren't available. You know, that might have happened in a few situations, but the teachers aren't the enemy here. And so what I'm going to, what I'm going to suggest is that
Heard stories about that.
What what I'm going to suggest is that we, I mean, I I'm concerned because we told our parents one thing and now we have a new plan that has a, I call it remote learning. We have, you know, digital learning and this is called remote learning. And and I I have major concerns about how a teacher is going to pull off multiple forms of formats of of delivery during the the school day. And so I, you know, those are answers that haven't been, you know, those are questions that haven't been answered that that we really need answers to. And so I I I think that, you know, I teach a Leon County Virtual School class. It is an asynchronous class where I do have communications that are scheduled with my my students and they're able to work at their own pace. They do have videos and recorded videos and PowerPoints and and assignments. And so for some kids, that is ideal. And for some parents, that's the 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 best environment for their kids to be in based on maybe some of their home life and and situations with their work. However, I I do hear what Ms. Rasmussen is saying. We have some kids, we have quite a few kids that have just checked out. And we know that kids that come to school, even in traditional brick and mortar, we have to engage them in the learning that we do. They don't always come with the the energy and the the focus to get in the mindset to to learn and to push themselves. And so as teachers and as educators, we have to do whatever we can. And so again, that's why we got to get somebody at the board level that really understands what it takes in the classroom for student learning so that we can engage with these kids, whether it be virtual, whether it be in a small community pods, whether it be at school. Those are all things that we got to do. But we we still have unanswered questions about the format of delivery. And and again, that goes right back to our teacher concerns. We have a safety concern. We have a form of delivery of teaching concern. And again, I think it all hinges on the fact that the Chromebooks weren't going to be here. And so we weren't able to go to the asynchronous digital learning format there. And so, you know, I I'm, you know, I I don't, I'm not going to sit here and criticize. Like I said before, we tried our best to stay out of this and, you know, but we do have, we do have some situations that we still need to work out within the next two weeks. I heard Ms. Rasmussen say that we we landed the plane the other day and I and I just don't agree with that.
As a teacher, though, do you have any fear that for a significant number of students, this is, this is lost? This is gone forever. These kids will never get this back?
Well, Tom, you know, obviously, we can't make up time. And so there are some, there are some time constraints that we, you know, we are going to struggle, you know, with getting that learning that we missed. There is no doubt. And I can tell you, even from my own experience with my own kids, I'm starting to see a little bit of 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 skill drop off, you know, just from not being engaged in front of kids. And so as a community, we can't afford for that to happen. We can't let this be the end of learning for our for our students. And this is for a lot of these kids, this is the, you know, this is the what they're counting on in order to be able to 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 have opportunities in the future. And so we have to, as an organization, we have to do everything we can. But unfortunately, I think our our plan here is pushing more and more kids out of our public school system into the private schools, into the Florida Virtual School model. And a lot of that has to do with a communication plan that was consistent. And early on in the process, we should have given the parents this reopening plan prior to them making decisions and prior to our teachers saying that we're coming back. And we still haven't discussed anything, any any of this with the union. And so I'm not really sure it's all even going to going to happen.
DeeDee Rasmussen, same fear on on your part? And how do we proceed?
Yeah, let me just back up once. I want to, do want to talk about the kids first. But before, if I may, just respond, I I think Mr. Stemley might be a little bit confused about the role of the board versus the superintendent and the role of the superintendent has had, you know, we don't, collective bargaining happens with the bargaining team and then it comes to the board for approval or not. We have shades, you know, we have sessions that are called executive sessions that are not in the public purview. And so what's happening in those sessions right now, I'm not at liberty to disclose. But we have professional lawyers and litigants that handle this kind of the the negotiations with the union. And the union is, by its very nature, doing what it does. And I'm not being critical. Let me be quick to differentiate between teachers, the lovely human beings that we all love and appreciate in our community, and the big Z U union with capital U. I think that that will work itself out eventually. I certainly can't defend every position that the superintendent has recommended. I can do my best to make to make it work and to interject my leadership when I can and then when I'm able to. And that's exactly what I've done. But but the role of the superintendent here versus that of the of a single board member and, you know, is it's a, it can be unique. And particularly in our district where the voters of of Leon County have three or four times now decided that the superintendent should be elected and not appointed. So let's be clear that the superintendent does not report to the board. He he has his own autonomy to do a lot of things. And we, as a board, have a responsibility to do our job. And as I mentioned, even on the board, there's some differential differentiated opinion. So anyway, not to get off on that. I am concerned about children and very concerned about those that we may have lost during this. I think I was struggling with an answer earlier today. I kept rephrasing. I was like, we we have learning gains that have been, learning gains that would have been lost. Normally, we have a summer slide. I'm calling this the summer avalanche because we lost the nine weeks plus the summer. And I, for my whole career of the last couple of decades, I I was completely focused on pedagogies of engagement, community-based learning, community-based research, things that engage students, the arts, athletics, all the things that keep kids in school and keep them wanting to learn more and inspire and drive them. And I'm very concerned that stepping back and sitting in front of a computer now can't, won't get there and won't keep them engaged. Now, not to say that the people who have developed some of the learning platforms, especially at the collegiate level, aren't doing a great job of making it more, like right now, we're having a really robust conversation with the three of us through a computer screen. I'm at my house, you're in the studio, I assume, or somewhere, Alex is somewhere. But we're, it's still, it's very interactive. We're still having a conversation. So there are things that can absolutely be done. I have a good friend who's a teacher. And when when we first went into this at the end of last quarter, she started using her kitchen. And she teaches in her classroom, she teaches little kids fractions with with cooking. Well, she turned her, I mean, her kitchen became Martha Stewart, all, you know, she was all in there and they were interacting and it was a really great thing. But that doesn't help the kid that never logged on. And that's where I'm hoping that maybe, maybe when the Chromebooks get here, that maybe with the hotspots we've been able to add with the smart buses, maybe working with the city and the county to increase bandwidth and and access to to digital will will help. I, you know, I I am concerned. And all, and one more thing, not to, sorry, I don't mean to ramble on. But I'm also concerned about how we meet our kids where they are. I don't think that the children that left here right before spring break in March are the same kids that are coming back. They have seen and witnessed and felt trauma. Many of them live in poverty. Families have lost their jobs. There are real issues that have impacted these young lives. And I believe we have a lot more to overcome than just the lost learning gains. We have got to find a way to meet them where they are and to help them feel safe and protected and nurtured. And then when we check off Maslow's hierarchy of needs, then we can talk about educating.
Just one quick question for both of you before we have a summation here as time runs short. And start with you, Ms. Rasmussen, if we could. What do you tell parents? What's the best advice you can give them besides vote for DeeDee? Hey, we
No, you know, honestly, I I haven't had a lot of time to think about the campaign, to tell you the truth. I've been pretty busy trying to trying to navigate the pandemic for the district and as best I can, given my role and in my lane. Parents call all the time. They stop me. What do I do? What do I do? And what I think it is, I really think it's just deeply personal. Every family has a different circumstance, either an older relative at home that they're worried about or an immunocompromised child. My goodness, I had no idea how many people had underlying health conditions in this community. Because, you know, most people try to put on their brave face and move forward and keep going. And so I think it's a deeply personal choice. And I think one of the things I am most proud about, even if it's not perfect, as Mr. Stemley has pointed out, it's not perfect. We don't have all the answers. Nobody does. This is a pandemic that we have never dealt with before. So are we getting it all right? Absolutely right? No, probably not. Has it been messy? Yes, it's been messy. But one of the things I'm really proud about is that we're able to offer families and students three different options on the virtual space. If they're not comfortable coming back to school, then we're encouraging them to find one of those options that works best for them. And that will allow us, hopefully, to have fewer students physically present on campus that will help with social distancing.
Okay, Alex Stemley, what do you tell parents?
I I tell parents, vote for Alex Stemley. And then I also tell them that student learning will be a priority for me when I'm on the board. Not only student student learning, but I'm also going to to make sure that wellness, you know, and I I don't just say mental health, but wellness of our families and our students is also a priority on our board. And last but not least, the open communication channels and connecting those dots between the schools and the district is something that I really look forward to working with. We've got to work on these power structures. We've got to open back up the communication channels that have closed over time from organizational creep. And I do believe that those things, even within a pandemic, we can be optimistic about coming with solutions that are that are that are going to be valuable for our our community. Some of the things that have highlighted in this pandemic, you know, are things that we had issues with before. They just were magnified by this this pandemic. And so these, those three things are things that I will make a priority on the board and I look forward to to serve in this community in the future.
That kind of brings us to the the wrap-up part of our program on this political perspectives, talking with the two contenders for Leon County School Board District Four. And we'll go back to our original order to kind of get the, oh, about a minute and a half. Again, we're not going to tight time this, folks, but just if you could keep it within that timeframe, it would be very useful. Starting with you, DeeDee Rasmussen, as the incumbent, your best pitch to folks as to why you should continue in the position that you have now for another four years?
Well, thank you, Tom. I appreciate the opportunity. And again, under normal circumstances, I would applaud and welcome anyone who's interested and willing to go and to do what it takes to run for office. And under the circumstances, though, I think in the middle of a crisis, that trusted and tried leadership is important. We may not agree on every decision, but again, being a part of a collegial board, I don't have the luxury of pushing my own agenda. I have to try to work to create a consensus across disparate positions and build consensus so that we can have a singular focus moving forward. And I believe I've done that. And I'd be honored to have your continued confidence in in that. I, you know, as Mr. Stemley has mentioned, he he does bring the voice of education. But I would contend that we have an education voice, strong and clear, among the staff and the leadership and even on the board with an already a Deer Lake teacher and a seasoned principal on the board. My voice is different. My voice is is as a community member and someone who understands government processes. I don't know that, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure that my opponent's ever even sat on any kind of board, like a board of directors, as a volunteer even before. So it's very different when you're in the arena. And I, some of the suggestions that he's made, you know, while worthwhile, I I just because I've been on the board as long as I have, I kind of feel like I know why that won't work. But, you know, I I would just be honored to to continue to serve if the voters see fit. But you know what? This is their seat, not mine. And I feel like this is sort of like a job interview. The voters will be the ones who make the hiring decisions and, Tom, you're The voters will be the ones who make the hiring decisions, and Tom, you're the interviewer. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, DeeDee Rasmussen. And Alex Stemley, your elevator pitch for why there should be a change in your opinion?
I think first off, is I can commit to the voters that I'm going to vote on all the issues that come before the board. I can commit to the voters that I can, this will be my primary full-time job, and I will be able to commit the time needed to be able to, to get through these challenges in these changing situations. And I, you know, and Ms. Rasmussen may not be aware, but I have sat on boards and commissions and been part of councils before. And so I, I look forward to using that leverage. And I'll tell you, this campaign is supported by district staff, it's supported by teachers, it's supported by families, voters across this district. And if you, if you want to know who's supporting the two campaigns, you should look into our finances, and you'll see that significantly, almost 90% of my funds are coming from District Four. And unfortunately, my, my opponent's funds are coming from vendors that do business directly with, with the school district here. And so I hope the voters see the difference between the two candidates here and look for something that's different than the status quo, and they'll find that here, and I'll do everything I can to represent them on the issues moving forward. And I look forward to it. Thanks, Tom.
Alex Stemley, DeeDee Rasmussen, we appreciate your participation in this political perspectives to both of you. Good luck in the upcoming, which is, of course, August 18th, the primary election here in Leon County. And thank you, folks, for tuning in, both on air and online. Perspectives produced by WFSU Public Media in Tallahassee. We thank Taylor Cox, Paul Damm, Amy Diaz de la Viegas, Tricia Monahan, and Lydell Rawls, also Kim Kelling, who helps us get this set up sometimes with only moments' notice. I'm Tom Flanagan. We have one final pre-primary political perspectives coming up later this week. On Thursday, we'll meet the incumbent and the challenger in the hotly contested Second Judicial Circuit Group 16 judges race. Should be a shootout. We invite you to join us then on air and online from WFSU Public Media. Take care.